I call this meeting to order. Let's start off the meeting with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common."
Okay, I hope everyone had a chance to read through the minutes. If they did, let me promote you to move. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood. All those in favor? Aye. I oppose. Very none. First item we got up, resolutions is appointing Greg Powell and the county information technology officer.
Yeah, this is a mandated requirement that we have a designated technology security officer for HIPAA. It's always been a person key. Used to be set in Kirby but retired, so Greg Powell, our IT manager, appointed to that. Doesn't carry any new salary or anything like that, just designated as a security officer.
First by legislator Holes, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. I oppose. Very none. Yep, might as well. And everyone should have gotten this last item passed around. Actually, I went to BDP and realized that it had to come before this committee. It's a resolution authorizing a change of the regional agreements with the county snowmobile clubs for use and maintenance. First by legislator Holes, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion?
Can you just briefly tell us what it is?
It's an annual thing where the snowmobile club chooses county trails to allow its maintenance.
Do they file an insurance waiver with us?
Yes, they do. Some of these trails are not county-owned trails. The county trail connects to other trails where they get landowners, like Hana or Turkey or whatever.
How much is the insurance for it?
It's in the agreement. It's a million. I'm not sure it's...
Million's really inadequate.
It's whatever the state snowmobile association provides for the license. This is the club insuring the county, not individually. The trails are maintained by the clubs, but other people who use the trails that aren't members of the club, they have that issue too.
So if somebody gets hurt...
Right.
One million per occurrence, two million aggregate.
It's light. Just saying, obviously, there are no... Just worry about us for self-insure.
We're not self-insured on this.
We aren't?
No. And since we're not charging for the use of county lands for recreational purposes, we have some immunity. The immunity is not, you know, intersections, things like that. We don't have it, but recreational use on lands, we do not charge state obligations, law grants some immunity.
Do we have a blanket, whole harmless agreement signed by the club in our favor?
We have the lease with the club. That's the extent of our agreements. These clubs, other than a groamer, really don't have any assets or dues. It's not like they're...
I just worry in court, you know? I mean, that's my only worry. I'm all for it. I just don't want it to...
County can't prevent itself from getting sued on this, so you're playing with the ax. There is an ax.
So if I can, there's a sentence, sentence hereby covenants and agrees identified by safe harmless accounting law liabilities, charges, expenses, including attorney fees and costs, on account of fault of or by reason of any such injuries, liabilities, claims, suits or losses.
Okay, so we are somewhat indemnified.
The extent that they have assets, when you look at these membership associations, they don't...
So would that make any member that would include the membership?
No, the nonprofit would be, say nonprofit has a thousand in the bank, the numbers don't have to pay, you know, it's the corporation that we're contracting with. So, I mean, the identification, the insurance is probably in all likelihood better than the identification in this instance because we're not contracting with entities that have a lot of assets. They may have 20,000 in the bank or something like that, but beyond that, you're not going to, or a groamer, you're not going to get much.
Will you feel comfortable?
Well, no, I didn't say that. You know, if you want to mitigate all risk, you don't do this in the first place, but the county is committed to providing recreational opportunities to its residents and tourists come here, and that brings with it some risk, you know, and part of government is providing these recreational opportunities. If we were totally risking first person, you wouldn't do it.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Very none? Here is. Two bid reports. One on the bid, the bid was thirty-three thousand, ten, information by Brad D'Antoni. And other responses, one, issued for the low bidder, the amount of two ninety-five, sixty-seven, car keys, lines, stone, issues with that?
No, they were previous then, although the price didn't go up substantially, but they were the only bidders.
Part of that. Understand. All those in favor?
I, I, oh, wait.
We're just gonna...
Yeah.
First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. Now, all those in favor? Aye. I oppose.
That's it. Can't do that much.
Yeah, it's kind of a special thing. In fact, the current vendor, Anderson, we're out Canada, so I think it's not going to affect my cost of maintenance, kind of that line does, because we're around very fine.
Most substantial interest of the town.
Eighty-six dollars a ton, so probably thirty thousand dollars a year. Have to have it though, it must have.
Of choice.
The company's out of Canada? They're in the Canadian dollars?
Right, yes. Can we say them in Canadian dollars? Look into that. Okay, we have a priority request from the Central New York Great Pumpkin Festival for the use of the parking lot. Do I MCA? Will be overseeing this year's Central New York Pumpkin Festival. It's an annual thing. They're requesting the use of the county warehouse parking lot on Saturday, October fifth, and Sunday, October sixth. Festival. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood.
If approved, we will draw a license agreement like we have in previous years, saying they can't put tent stakes into the pavement, they can't have open fires, fuel storage, they have to clean the parking lot, all that, and they can't, you know, do things at the warehouse.
The same one that we've done.
Right, yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. I oppose. None? Here is.
That's for no consideration.
There, we've been burned, so at least we're checking on it.
Yes, I apologize for not having the packet, but it's been fast and furious with our deadline approaching and wanted to give you the up-to-the-minute report on the projects. Next month we'll have a report also late detailing our past three years and the actual cost of projects that have been sold and done. But to give you the rundown, the proofing windows is complete, we're in the final payment application, so the capital projects will close. Hy-Vac, we're waiting for the last unit for the public safety center kitchen to be set week of nineteen sixteen. Legislative office building, we'll be finishing this week with a lot of the brick work, and then this Saturday, next Saturday, we'll be feed blasting the bricks, so we really have a lot of upper basements to grant it out front. That'll get the people acid with like a flying glass, some sort, I'd be here to see how it works, but that's being done on weekends, so that should be finished up. The other side of the yellow B project, the cortical piece, the pooling work is progressing along very nicely. There will be ninety to ninety-five percent complete by the thirtieth. They may linger a little bit longer, but they're later. And of course, the big one, the DMV, there was a meeting this morning, we're meeting every Wednesday currently with the contractors. And our bigger challenge is the DMV, the DMV did open, we've had issues with total finish completion of the DMV, that means that being nine sixteen where all items will be installed. They are functioning, could be better. And we, Kevin Cherry from Tetra Tech, senior vice president of operations, was here this morning, and he's been meeting with his partner group meeting every other one pretty much to keep Chris Sully on task. Our prime contractor, the county contractor currently with electrical planning, and Hy-Vac have been doing a great job. We have been on a lot of issues with the general contractor, and they're going to need to submit submittals so they can be approved, something to the board. And they still are struggling with some of that. They've committed this morning, we did have one of their vice presidents again, Chris Sully, who's also been meeting for the past six weeks, commit they all will be done on the thirtieth of September, so there is liquidated damages if they're not completely done. So be very close, so we'll see how that goes. They are working two shifts a lot of times, not all the time. Let's see, we're working this weekend as well, so. It's interesting, they're going to be paving the DMV next Monday, Tuesday, and/or into Wednesday.
So your chat?
CNY, I believe, in the future, would it be possible, I had to sign a similar agreement with the CWL I recently had done, that all of your subs are paid before you plan a final payment, because I've had five subs contact me about not being paid in a time, they, believe me, I don't make a plan on paying them all. So I appreciate everything your department did, they strangled and got people paid, but can we put it in the contract language that if the subs, and I just signed a similar contract, if the subs are not satisfied, we can hold money back and make sure everything's made full?
There's, there are bonds on this project, and before the project's accepted, there have to be lien releases from all subcontractors and prime contractors, make sure that everyone's prime, and they certify that. Furthermore, the lien law impresses a trust on the general contractor that they cannot, they have to pay the subs what they pay themselves. They should be doing that.
They were using the subs as banks, some of these went back to March.
And I don't think the latest issue was the general, I think it was a sub not paying one of their subcontractors, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think it was the general not paying a sub.
Sub, and sub no sub?
No, I don't think it was that the general contractor didn't pay the first sub, I think that person hired a trucking company and that...
They seem to generate around truckers and sellers and aggregate people.
Yeah, and they have remedies, they can file what's called a public improvement lien, which locks up the money in the treasurer's office until such time as they're paid by the general contractor, and we can't disperse that money that's held there. Unlike a mechanic's lien, when somebody puts a heating system in a house, the public improvement lien attaches the money or a bond. So we as county, once treasure gets public improvement lien, would not pay that until we have the satisfaction that everything squared away. So there are a couple fail safes. One is the lien releases before the project's closed out, and second is if they file a public improvement lien, we...
Would absolutely ensure, even though they waited, say, March for their money, at the end of the project, they would have to be paid regardless?
Well, it may be that a contractor disputes the bill, you know, for example, and they may lien it, they may say, hey, wait a second, you're charging us double what our subcontract says, and that's why we're not paying you, we're only paying you X dot, X plus Y. There are a variety of permutations that can happen here, but if we get a public improvement lien and it says hundred thousand bucks, we don't disperse that hundred thousand bucks until it's either bonded off or we got resolution releases from everybody.
I've had a lot of calls, I should direct them to your office. It's huge, a lot of them.
Yeah, I can't give them advice on how to file a public improvement lien against the county on its own project, but...
It seems like we have to resort to that, to our local contractors.
No, the first, the first issue was, as John noted, was slow submission of transmittals, and rightfully so, they were, they had issues because the general was not paying them, because the general hadn't billed us for work that was done. And, you know, we have to approve the work, sign off, make sure that's in accordance with the contract and the draws are there. The subs, you know, not paying their own contractors, I think is the latest issue. It wasn't that we didn't, the general didn't pay.
Highly regarded, local, long-term.
I know, it's just, but that's, but they have a right to file a public improvement lien as well, so.
And currently, we actually have a payment application right here that they're looking, the general contractor looking for three hundred thousand dollars, we're going to review it, and I've worked with the architect engineer to ensure that what they say is done. And if we do pay the full three hundred, which we're not actually, we still owe them, they also contract to six hundred, sixty-nine thousand dollars, so there's substantial amounts out there.
And then the retainage wouldn't get released if there's liquidated damages, we have to do a true-up on that, they may owe us money at the end of the, if this isn't done on time, they may owe us money per day on those liquidated damages, so.
It'd be great. But it's definitely something that has to be aligned to make sure. I think a lot of this, go away, the work of paper, it's a national contest, which where it was. The issues we had. Any other discussion on this? Highway, and we have a request, describe a highway garage, leave a parking lot over two forty, just for the...
Yeah, you just called the same gentleman, Mr. Lockman, though, it needed me, if we could use our facility again for the open floor parking. The giant figures this year that we probably won't even use it, because we've been dealing with the parking area down here by tractor supply and, you know, places, though, behind the food places there. But he was just so invited to be able to use it, it was possible, it was on the phone. I told him that they were going, and he said, oh.
Was there a lot of cars out there last year?
Then years ago, I, not all that year, a year before, yes, we had a lot of them, but just trying to get things closer, close to the park, close to the scrats, the shelves.
Is this, does this have to be part of their place, overall event plan, the event for the help committee?
Well, I think it is, I think it's part of the, is that he gets the okay and then submits everything to first.
And we do a license, yeah. Last I knew, this is part of their standing superdirtly plan. So if something happens and they don't get the other parking lot, they've got this, or if they need it, they've got it. But the health department wants to see smoke and floor parking, as does the city.
Definitely, if they use, try to fire mine first, and then also...
Yeah, you can do it by motion.
legislator Twist, second by legislator Holes. Any questions on that? All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Here is. I believe they have one other item.
The salt, then that's been out or we're waiting for, came official yesterday through the OGS, New York State, that we did, and it's good news, we're like five hundred, sorry, five dollars and forty-four cents, a ton cheaper than it was last year. Last year was fifty-eight ninety-four, this year it's fifty-three forty-four, I think. So the town highway superintendent had me this morning, I went there and told them about it also, so they're on board with it, just know what it was. And looking through the list that they give us, we were the second lowest on the list, ranging anywhere from Skyler Yates County, which Carriell is our dealer this year, very close to Carriell, so we were at like fifty-two dollars and some odd cents, and we were fifty-three, and the rest of them are up into the six. So we do pretty well. A lot better on that one. And this is a one-year. That's the only drawback is it's a one-year deal, we're still going to push and see if we can try for a three-year, if it'll do us any good or not, and, you know, the longer we push it out there, maybe. Between the two cities and the towns and the county together, you're looking at like seventy-eight thousand tons of salt possibly to purchase. That's what we put out.
It's, next year, we, I know we talked about it before, a longer term.
Right.
And next year, we'll put it up for a three- or a five-year price, eight-year budget on their end, and they have to do six or seven.
I just don't know if the state of New York, talking to that contract, might be, you know, put it out on their own bids.
Did Adam back a lot of them? Are they really going to do that this summer again?
Well, they're on there.
They're on the statement there.
They have American rocks on. I think they were at fifty-nine or sixty-eight. What I thought was a good deal, anyway, that's pretty good.
Definitely, definitely. All in. Thank you. Want to say anything, Brandon?
We have an option to purchase a private hangar on the airport, so we restructured our leases last year, and we now have the right of first refusal should an owner decide to sell a hangar, one of his come up for sale. And it went through government courts this morning with some discussions, obviously. We have an option to purchase a new hangar that was constructed on the airport. The price is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred, I think it is, and we do have old tests available that we can use for that purchase.
There was a lot of discussion on that previous.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, it's one of the best things to have at the airport, a lot of...
How many additional spots will we be?
We'll have one long-term rented out, and we'll have spots in there for, depending on the size of the aircraft, but up to three additional aircraft in there for overnight saves or long terms.
And that's heated.
Yes, it is. That's one of the issues with that, we have the password. The size was an issue as well as heated space. We don't have, we have one main hangar there that we can fit four small planes in, we have all those spots dedicated, we have long-term tenants in that, but the door opening was basically the limiting factor on that, we couldn't get planes of any substantial size in there, even if we take everything out, the door doesn't open high enough to get any sizable jets in there. This one was designed around the biggest aircraft that we can accommodate at the airport, so we can take that, actually, Axilon is, they're so excited about this that it made their national standard, that they're able to utilize indoor heated space. We lose a lot of flights to Syracuse, especially in the winter, because we don't have that capability, we can de-ice, but if there's any, you know, wind, anything else, de-icing is not going to fix any damage to the aircraft from sitting outside. So this is, I expect this to be pretty happily utilized, and it also, we're trying to attract a lot more jet traffic to the airport. This is one of the first steps, you need a place to put them inside. I'm actually pretty surprised.
An issue in the past, we talked about it, this is, people larger aircraft, more expensive aircraft, right?
So we actually got quotes from CNS, not quotes, but estimates of around two point two billion dollars for us to build, some building of that size. We have the option for this one for eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
So your chat?
I'm just curious, why does he want to get rid of them?
He's just decided to sell it now. It's actually, it's actually cheaper and easier for him to not maintain the building, is what he's finding out, because he pays this lease rate of around three thousand dollars a year, plus he's paying mountain taxes, plus he has to maintain the building. The building does have a fifty-year life expectancy on it, so we don't anticipate major repairs on it.
Brandon, how much would you say it costs to heat it?
We don't have that estimate right now yet because of the substantial size of it.
How big is the building?
It's twelve thousand square feet, hundred by hundred.
Size within your arena, is it structural foam insulation?
It's not foam, it's bags of insulation in there, and then they put the holly lining on the inside of the hangar. It's actually very...
Foam probably would have been cost prohibitive, but super efficient. So what would we get, like, in projected income?
Pretty much guaranteed from that one long-term tenant is fifteen thousand annual, and we also lost the sales tax revenue off of that because we couldn't accommodate it. I did have one other jet that was very similar to that.
What do you mean the sales tax revenue?
Apparently, if you purchase a jet or an airplane, wherever it's immediately based, when you buy it, they get the sales tax revenue off of it. We didn't have anything where we could accommodate that, so you went over to preface, and we lost, I don't know what that dollar amount was, but...
It's a lot.
It's a lot, yes.
So one client, fifteen thousand?
One client, fifteen thousand. We haven't developed a rate schedule for it yet, but I've been researching through other airports. Overnight for, say, Axilon's jet would be around four hundred dollars per night, their helicopter would be around two hundred per night.
I mean, typically, how many?
The jet is probably ten times annual, the helicopters twenty to thirty times annually.
Okay, so our base, I just loosely base it, say, at eight fifty, the county tax annually would be about seventy-six oh seven, town tax would be about twenty-nine thousand four hundred, the school tax would be about two hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy-three. No, twenty-three thousand two seventy-eight, that's ten years.
You're right, wow.
No, I did a ten-year and an annual. So, yeah, seventy-six hundred, twenty-nine forty, and twenty-three two seventy-eight. I'm just, I'm nervous about the heating, like, is it, is this propane heat?
It's natural gas.
So it's natural gas?
There's four, there's twenty-five tons, and we tried that in a man's building.
You also got fuel sales.
That's the other thing, it's along with these storage fees, all the fuels, and that's where we make our money, I don't want to say how much.
How much will the, how much money would you use from tobacco?
Eight fifty?
All eight fifty?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to make a comment, I made it this morning. In addition to the fact that this plane can land and be at our airport and also go inside, these people go in hotels, they run a vehicle, they go to eat, they do all this stuff in our, I mean, in our, you know, county. Like, we had some people the other day that came in, had a problem with a jet, they go, recommend it to restaurants downtown in Bolton, or the motels, whatever. But that's kind of business, you know, we get also, and they want good stuff. Like, I understand, I just tend to run numbers like a Republican girl, okay?
They don't lie.
There was also a study done.
I want to make sure they're good, hard numbers, and it's just, there's a lot of mist over here.
Well, I think it's a great deal personally, because I think the highest tax people we got is up to new plans and people like that, and we're providing the service which they really want, as Brandon is saying.
Highest tax?
Well, the new plans are one of our highest taxes we're getting after a given rate at this point, but okay.
Oh, true.
I just, I'm just, the inherent risk and everything else, I just want to make sure the numbers match.
There was also a study done at the airport, I'm not sure who did the study, but I believe it was part of the last master plan, that it was noted that fourteen thousand square feet of indoor heated space would be necessary to attract more jet traffic. We can't go fourteen thousand square feet because then you need fire suppression and everything else in there, and the cost just triples.
Is there sprinklers supposed to be in it?
There's not, because it's not required.
It's just under the twelve thousand square feet. I just, I mean, it's great, but if the heating bill comes out to fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-eight, that was a really bad deal.
Yeah, yeah, but then we did one overnight, Axilon, we made four hundred dollars.
We need one every night, Brandon.
Like, what kind of temperature gets it carrying?
Not very much, I mean, probably fifty degrees, yes.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Is there entry or heat?
That was again, cost prohibitive, installation was cost prohibitive, in the long run, it would have been the best way, because then we don't have to.
My God, Ron would have come up with his own, he loves.
I understand, we're not going to. Okay, next thing we got up is, we need, we're going to executive session, two of us, Lucy.
The sale or acquisition of county property, which might be affected in public, and I also request an executive session on any litigation regarding snow and ice, and Holes?
Not anybody. We're going to executive session, legislator Twist, legislator House. Holes in favor?
Aye.